Action Plan. May I have recognition of council members in attendance, Jared?
Absolutely. We have Mr. Bonerotti, Mr. Paul Messina, Mr. Paul Mary, Mr. Macy, Mr. Klein with us in person. Via telephone, we have Ms. Nakareti Chapkus and Mr. Grisbeck, and of course, Ms. Pritsio.
And may I have the invited guests?
First up would be Brittany Prisak, Director of Department of Sustainability.
I'd like to first say a little bit about the hearing with regard to the structure of the hearing. So please be aware that we have a significant number of individuals signed up to offer comments, and it's therefore vital to adhere to the time limitations that I will be discussing in order to provide an opportunity for everyone to speak. As you can see on the agenda, we have a handful of invited guests who will be called to presenter's table in turn. These invited guests will have 10 minutes to make their prepared remarks, and the clock on the table will display their remaining time to them. The light on the clock will turn yellow, and you'll hear a single beep when you have one minute left, and the light will be turned red when you have multiple beeps, and your time has expired. For invited guests presenting remotely, I would like the clerk to provide verbal cues when one minute remains, and at the conclusion of 10 minutes, please, you know, return to your seats. When all the presentations are complete, that's when council will entertain, or our panelists will entertain some questions from council. And it's a similar aspect with the public. When we take public comment, it's three minutes, just like in our council meetings. And please note that this hearing will be transcribed and livestreamed and recorded, so council members who aren't with us today can also, and the public can hear everyone's comments. So with that, let's turn to our first invited guest, which is our Director of the Department of Sustainability for the County, Ms. Pracek.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, thank you to county council and the public for coordinating this public meeting around the Climate Action Plan for Allegheny County. We're excited to be moving this plan forward. It's critical to provide a regional vision for tackling the impacts of climate change in the county. We see this Climate Action Plan as an opportunity to develop and implement impactful strategies that'll assist us in managing our own operations in a more sustainable way. This includes our facilities, fleet, parks, and even the services and programs we manage and offer to the communities. It's also an opportunity to develop a regional strategy around climate action, providing leadership to our municipalities, businesses, and residents. Climate action planning, green energy jobs, workforce development activities, and implementing sustainable best practices is not new for Allegheny County, and we can see it in the many efforts of our communities. The county hired its first sustainability manager in 2009. Green Building Alliance has been managing the Pittsburgh 2030 district since 2012, empowering over 86 million square feet of commercial property to reduce their carbon emissions by almost 3 million metric tons of CO2 to date. Sustainable Pittsburgh's been working with our communities, businesses, and even workplaces to implement sustainable practices through their certification programs. Partners for Work, the Keystone Energy Efficiency Alliance, Sustainable Pittsburgh, our local universities and colleges, as well as so many more, are creating clean jobs and training programs to encourage a shift in our economy. The University of Pittsburgh, the city, and the county are all implementing sustainable procurement policies and practices. We can see this work is already being done in our community, and the Climate Action Plan process will allow us to showcase these efforts as models for our communities. Not just with the people and groups who are already doing the work, and not just in a "hey, look at what we did" process, but rather in a "here's how we did it, and here's how you can too." To talk through the process about hiring a consulting team for this planning process, I want to recognize that a request for proposal process can be a lot of work, both for interested vendor teams, excuse me, to develop, as well as the county evaluation team to actually evaluate those proposals, especially when only one consultant team is going to be selected in the end. So as not to delay that process nor waste multiple consultants' team or the county's time, we issued what's called a request for a statement of qualifications in early June as an alternative to a full request for proposals. After we shortlisted a few qualified firms from that list, we received full proposals today. So what do we anticipate including in the actual plan or part of that planning process? Well, the first step is going to be a review of existing relevant county and community plans to summarize similarities in strategies and goals already acknowledged by the region and previous stakeholder engagement. We've partnered with the University of Pittsburgh's Law Clinic to help get us started on that process. These plans include the State Connects, the City of Pittsburgh's Climate Action Plan, as well as the recently released Pittsburgh Regional Transit Plan. Both the county's plan for healthier Allegheny and the original and first 2008 County Comprehensive Plan will be included in that review, as well as other local municipal climate action plans. Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission's Priority Climate Action Plan, which was submitted to the EPA in March, will provide a group regional framework, and then the University of Pittsburgh's Climate Action Plan being very relevant to us because it has a focus on buildings and assets relating to mitigation and resiliency, which are of importance to the county. The goal of this review process is to align our strategies and goals for this Climate Action Plan with ones that have already been recognized or are taking place in our communities. We've also connected with other similar counties and communities for advice on how they've completed their Climate Action Plan during this process. In addition, we intend to review county facilities and assets to conduct a gap analysis identifying incomplete or missing information. This analysis will provide us with a baseline for county operations' carbon emissions. SBC has already provided a county-wide carbon emissions based on their Priority Climate Action Plan, so we have one for the county as a whole. We'll also be reviewing county-run programs and services relating to economic development, job creation, public health, sustainable procurement, waste diversion, agriculture and food systems, transportation, waste and water management, and consumption. This review of those programs and their environmental impacts, how they might be impacted by climate change, will be to help create an idea of how they could be used to build resiliency within our communities. The planning process, of course, will also include development and implementation of an outreach and engagement strategy. That includes the creation of stakeholder advisory groups and working groups. Community input and co-governance are top priorities for our county executive, so having a robust engagement process throughout this planning process is very important. The community members and county employees that will advise the county and its consultants as we navigate many strategies that can be employed as we write this Climate Action Plan. This outreach will also include education and awareness components to inform the public about the process, progress, and recommendations that come out of that plan. The strategy will be developed in collaboration with engagement and outreach strategy that's being developed for the county's comprehensive plan that will also be starting this year. The purpose of this is to reduce duplications in that engagement process, public burnout reduction, like reduction in public engagement burnout, and costs. There will also be collaboration with Southwest PA Commission's Comprehensive Climate Action Plan, which is their next step. This strategy will be sure to take into account barriers that might reduce someone's ability to participate in this process, including language, technology, transportation, and disability, and more. Of course, the biggest piece will be development of the Climate Action Plan itself, which includes implementation strategies based on priorities for both the county and our community. The plan will address county facilities and operations, county policies and services, county authorities, municipalities, businesses, and residents. It will also explore strategies of both mitigation and resiliency related to agriculture, energy, transportation, the built environment, industry, forest and park lands, public health, water, and waste. Not all of this work will be entirely based on the selected vendor. There will be a county project team that supports and coordinates this effort. We may find that many of the strategies and recommendations relating to climate action may fit better within the county's comprehensive plan or overlap between the two plans. This will be considered as we explore all of these recommendations. All strategies and recommendations will be evaluated and prioritized based on emissions reduction, energy and water savings, community benefits, especially in low-income and disadvantaged communities, racial inequity impacts, workforce development opportunities, overall implementation costs, and more. Although the planning process will take about a year to get to the final version and all approvals, we want to ensure both council and the community that our work won't stop during that process. We have great efforts that are already in place, and we're going to continue to move these projects forward. As announced earlier this week, Allegheny County received Energy Efficiency Conservation Block grant money that will be supporting energy efficiency upgrades and retrofits within our facilities. The Health Department is currently implementing an environmental justice government-to-government grant that will support communities in the Mon Valley to develop climate resiliency strategies and implement some local projects. The Health Department is also closing next week the call for applications for the Clean Air Fund. The county just submitted a grant for over $4 million to the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant Program for electric vehicle charging stations throughout the region. County staff are currently working closely with Connect and Pennsylvania Resources Council on waste diversion opportunities and needs within the community. We'll continue to move these important priorities forward and integrate our efforts into the Climate Action Plan. I know the county executive is committed to building a county for all, where we all feel safe in our communities, connected to our neighbors, and have the opportunity to thrive. A Climate Action Plan touches on all of those areas, and I thank you all again for the opportunity to provide this update, and I look forward to hearing from the other speakers and the public about their concerns and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we will hear from, now, she will be followed by Dr. Patricia DiMarco, previous Chair of Connect, who helped lead their Climate Action Plan development process. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me here today. I appreciate this chance to speak to you about one of the most urgent issues facing our time. I am, first of all, wanting to recognize that climate change is an existential crisis for all living creatures, and that we need to recognize the fact that we have a limited time to deal with it effectively. The laws of nature are not negotiable. The more greenhouse gases continue to accumulate in the atmosphere, and the longer we take to reduce these emissions, the fewer options we will have for viable habitation of this planet. I'm not going to give you all the data, which is in my technical report which I filed, but I would like to point out that we have the opportunity to make a really significant plan for the county at this time. The first critical objective for the county Climate Action Plan should be to set a goal to reach net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 at least. These actions will need to phase out the use of fossil fuel combustion and dependence on technologies that are based on the extraction of fossil methane, petroleum, and coal, and these should be a priority for the Climate Action Plan as it's implemented. You can apply fossil fuel reduction measures in their properties, buildings, transportation and operations in the county, in the areas that they control directly, and it also gives a lens for budget and development plans and decisions, and setting a serious net-zero emissions goal gives a way to coordinate development initiatives and operational opportunities as well. The second critical objective involves process, and Brittany has spoken to that as an important element of their process. I agree with that. We do not directly control many aspects of climate action, or mitigation or adaptation, but they do have a leadership role in providing vision and direction for building a more resilient and sustainable future for all of the citizens in the county. Addressing the need to move effectively away from burning all fossil fuels will require collaboration and joint efforts across all levels of government, local and state, as well as federal. And we need to focus on those areas where we can have the courage to make choices for investments in a renewable energy-based economy and decline participation in systems that lock us into fossil fuel development for future decades. Establishing criteria for climate actions, mitigation, and adaptation will benefit from input from widely representative constituents of Allegheny County. As we define the components of an effective Climate Action Plan, we should evaluate how this affects the environmental justice, the air and water quality, and the green spaces balanced with business development in a clean economy. I'd like to share a few brief lessons from the local climate planning that we did in Forest Hills, and I'm not going to read all of what I've given you in writing, but two things. First, we coordinated the development of the climate plan with the development of the action with the comprehensive plan. We did the comprehensive plan goals first, and we used those to drive the components of the climate plan, and then we also adopted implementing measures like an active transportation plan, the Guaranteed Energy Savings Program, and a number of other measures within the borough so that they are going to reach a net zero by 2030 for the borough building operations. This kind of planning coordination, I think, is really a key opportunity that you have at the county level because we have so many multiple communities within our county. I have some specific recommendations for the county Climate Action Plan, especially based on the experience of Connect, where we had 41 communities working together in the ICLI model of climate action developing. And first and foremost is that the county directly controls its property, buildings, and operations. People will not move to what they cannot visualize, so having the county not only implement its own climate plan in its buildings and operations, but to make sure the public knows what is going on, the cost savings that are achieved, the actual measures that you take, and how you finance them. I think the most frequent question I receive about Forest Hills' net-zero borough buildings is, "Well, how did you pay for that? And you didn't raise taxes." Well, you know, that's what people need to know, and as you go through this, sharing that experience becomes a model for what people can do. Secondly, the county provides policy guidance across all the communities. As you're updating your county a comprehensive plan for development, it can provide guidance for the next 25 years to all the communities who are in the county. In compiling the plan, the input of many citizens has already been acquired through the All-In Allegheny process. I hope that that kind of an approach continues, but the community input and engagement can be an important part of shaping the goals and objectives. So when we were looking at the Connect process, I want to tell you that multi-community collaboration really works. The Connect Climate Plan accomplished significant climate measures, and most of them happened through multi-community collaborations. If the county applies that kind of approach among the 139 communities that you have access to, we can coordinate and amplify the efforts of your own planning process. And just by a couple of examples, in 2018, 35 Connect communities out of the 139 municipalities emitted as much as the City of Pittsburgh in a single year. That means that any regional plan has the potential to have a tremendous impact on what can be done by coordinating emissions reductions. The third major category where the county can have a significant impact through its climate plan is by acting as a convener and a catalyst. As we're all working on our Climate Action Plans, we keep hitting the wall, and these are places where the county may have the authority to convene and coalesce action for things like data access. Climate planning is extremely data-intensive, and we all struggle to get the basic information we need. Multi-agency jurisdiction coordination for transportation, for housing, a lot of the things that we're trying to do cross multiple community lines, and the county can help with that. We also have possibilities of expanding procurement, waste management, recycling, and emergency response coordination. These areas are all areas where individual communities have barriers to effective action, but if you work together and if the county helps to catalyze action on these, we can do a good job. In conclusion, I commend the council for taking this opportunity to hear from people about the importance of acting on the climate challenge. I know that the decisions necessary to transform our economy, our occupations, and our way of life, from one that's based on fossil extractive resources to one that's based on renewable and sustainable systems, are not easy decisions. We could continue on the path of minimal disruption and continue to pursue technologies that gradually transition, but we've been doing that for 30 years already. It's time to really get serious. Each community, each business, each person has a role to play in this transformation. We can build a shared prosperity. We can build a transformation, the way a caterpillar turns to a butterfly, for a better future for our children, a more robust future, a more equitable future, and a safer future for all of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. DiMarco. Next, we will be joined by Dr. Matt Mahalik. He's Executive Director of the Breathe Project, and his remarks and Dr. DiMarco's remarks have been shared with all the members of council, so just so we're aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Pritsio. Thank you, members of council. Really appreciate you holding this hearing and inviting me to speak among so many distinguished people, so thank you so much for your work. I'm Matt Mahalik. I'm the Director of the Breathe Project. I'm the Director of an organization dedicated to improving our region's air quality and quality of life, working together with over 60 regional organizations and institutions with community voices, science, and public health at our core. And I also have worked in the past at Sustainable Pittsburgh and teach at Heinz College at Carnegie Mellon Sustainable and Resilient Community Development, which I've been doing since 2008, and working on this climate issue all the way back to the initial Pittsburgh Climate Action Plan. So thank you for making progress today. The daily litany of increasing extreme weather events, extreme heat spells, wildfires, extreme storms, atmospheric rivers, flooding, mudslides, and the loss of life and damage to property are accelerating, just as scientists have predicted. The sooner that our county addresses the ongoing climate crisis, the better. It's time for Allegheny County to set a course to reduce our climate emissions. But my first major point is, we must do more than just count emissions. We must embrace a justice and equity lens for our climate work. We need to invite people who've been and will be impacted most by these extreme events into the climate planning and resiliency-building process. There must be a shift in mindset to include the most vulnerable people in the process. There must be a shift to include people previously invisible to the halls of power in the planning process. Unless we shift to become more inclusive, we will put everyone at risk because we will have left the most vulnerable at risk. A justice and equity lens is essential for the success of everyone in the county. All of our county residents will benefit from committing to this course of action because our county's health will improve, our county's quality of life will improve, and our county's reputation will improve. My second major point is that we must include, measure, and reduce industrial emissions throughout Allegheny County as part of the county's Climate Action Plan. Air quality issues and climate issues are tightly intertwined. Both impacts come from the same root cause, the ongoing use of fossil fuels that produce particle pollution, ozone, heavy metals, hazardous air pollutants, volatile organic compounds, and of course, global warming emissions such as natural gas leakage, carbon dioxide production, nitrogen oxides, black carbon, and other pollutants. According to the SPC Priority Climate Plan, the industrial sector is responsible for just under half, 47% of all climate emissions in the entire region. These emissions are most heavily concentrated in Allegheny County, which is responsible for 40% of all climate emissions in the 10-county region. Stationary sources make up 52% of all regional emissions. For these reasons, the county must use its powers of convening, leadership, and enforcement through its hosting of the county's air quality program to reduce climate emissions in the industrial sector. These emission statistics are mirrored by measurement of industrial pollution and its health impacts. People in the Mon Valley already have air that's worse than 93% of the entire country for fine particulate matter, and it's well-known that particles are carriers for hazardous air pollutants that are delivered directly into the bloodstream of residents. As a result, Allegheny County's in the top 1% of all counties for cancer risk from point source air toxic emissions. 90% of this risk is attributable to integrated steel facilities such as the Mon Valley Works, which also happens to be the largest carbon dioxide emitter in the county as well. In fact, the Mon Valley Works emits 62% of CO2 emissions of all industrial facilities in Allegheny County. The results of this pollution mean there are extra deaths occurring in our county from industrial air pollution. Earlier this year, a scientific study of air pollution in Allegheny County revealed that there are an estimated 640 to 1,373 people per year dying from particle pollution based on 2020 to 2022 data. That means that 3.7 to seven times more people are dying of air pollution than COVID-19. Mortality rates from PM2.5 pollution were 33% higher in Allegheny County's low-income communities, and mortality rates were 18% higher in Allegheny County's communities of color. On average, somewhere between two to four people die each day in Allegheny County from industrial air pollution. Justice and equity mean we work to put an end to these unfair burdens. Recently, NYU School of Public Health documented the improvements of health in communities near the former Shenango cookworks after it closed in 2016. Average weekly visits to the local emergency departments in Allegheny County for heart-related problems decreased by 42% immediately after the shutdown. That's what happens when burning fossil fuels at major outdated industrial facilities can be curtailed. Allegheny County needs a climate policy so that our region's health can improve while climate-harming emissions can be decreased as investments in alternatives to fossil fuel-dependent technologies increase so that outdated technologies can be retired, phased out, and sunset. This needs to occur in how we generate electricity, how we heat our homes and buildings, in government operations, in the transportation sector, and throughout our commercial and industrial sectors. My third major point is that we need to work together to succeed. We have a county executive interested in moving forward with a climate plan through the Department of Sustainability. We have a county council with an ordinance and a sustainability committee pressing for a climate plan. We have many people from impacted communities present today requesting a role in the process. We have a lot of technical and policy expertise in these areas. We need to invite, align, support, and collaborate. Today's dialogue is an important step. Even more important will be creating a pathway for working together meaningfully after this meeting. Everyone here wants us to succeed together. This collaboration framework is essential so that its decisions and operations can align with meeting the goals of reducing our climate emissions. With some additional leadership and updated information from policies and practices, from investments, from the inflation- from investments from the Inflation Reduction Act, and changes in capital markets, it's possible for Allegheny County to meet the target of a 43% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2030, based on 2019 emissions levels. These are the goals of the International Panel on Climate Change has set forth in order for our society to meet a 1.5-degree Celsius warming threshold by 2050, in order to prevent the worst outcomes from global warming. If we succeed together, our county will be on the pathway to positioning our communities strategically for the 21st and 22nd centuries, honoring the future of our children, improving public health in our county's communities, healing environmental injustices in communities that have borne the brunt of fossil fuel pollution for 150-plus years, attracting investment to an infrastructure suitable for resilient future, and sustaining a workforce and skills for building that infrastructure, building a community that will retain our talented students from our region's great universities, embracing the opportunities that innovation and creativity can bring forth, setting the stage for long-term prosperity for everyone in the county. So I say, let's save lives, reduce burdens on vulnerable people, and take action that makes everyone proud of our county by embracing these opportunities that will be unlocked with collaboration around an expanded and inclusive climate policy for our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mahalik. Joining us virtually from Erie County are Dr. Susan Clark. She's the Chair of the Volunteer Community Task Force to Develop the Erie County New York Climate Action Plan, and she will also be joined by Josh Wilson, Director of Sustainability. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, so I'm going to move just to talk to you. My name is Josh Wilson, Director of Sustainability at Erie County. We're the home of Buffalo, New York, so we see ourselves as your little Rust Belt city to the north. And we're a county of about a million people. We are about a third rural, third suburban, a third urban. So we're a very purple community. Our politics, I think, are pretty similar to Allegheny County. And you know, the approach we've had to take around climate change has really tried to address our community needs and our setting in that way. So you know, our county executive has really led this as an effort around protecting life and property in our community, just as a basic function of government, to promote justice, to protect our community from these kinds of threats, to be forward-thinking, and you know, just set ourselves in motion for success and, you know, kind of an equitable future for our community. And so in 2019, we conducted a climate vulnerability assessment. Dr. Clark, who's on the call with me today, was the leader of the effort, and that really pointed to how vulnerable we are to extreme weather coming from climate change, especially extreme heat, wind events, precipitation events, biological events, biological threats. And so, you know, that was one aspect of setting us in motion to do a really kind of comprehensive, community-facing climate action plan with an equity focus. And so we embarked on that. We spent about a year with our climate change task force that Dr. Clark leads, scoping out our plan, and then we spent about 18 months conducting their plan. It involved about 100 volunteer stakeholders, 70 public meetings. It was a large effort. We assembled 10 work groups who worked over that, an 18-month period, assembling the different chapters of the plan, and was a big success for our community, something that we're seeing really the fruits of already. So I want to, first, one thing I want to point out is, you know, as counties, and with that climate vulnerability assessment, we saw that, you know, really, a lot of our levers, our regard to the resilience side of this. Our plan is both mitigation and resilience, but if you look at the role of our county, and I think this is probably true for Allegheny County too, we have just a pivotal role protecting vulnerable people in our community. A lot of our workers are social workers, health and human services, emergency services, protective services. We're just the gamut of, and public health too, that are really just the gamut of kind of people who are boots on the ground, protecting the people who we see, we've found are really in the crosshairs of these changes, as some of the speakers before me pointed out. And so it really highlighted how important it was for us to get in front of this issue and work with our community and come up with solutions and a plan to really move forward in a positive way that takes into consideration the needs of these communities. So the resulting plan, and Susan, Dr. Clark is going to go into this more detail, but we've really tried to create a big tent plan that includes actions where the county is the direct actor, but also anticipates actions by other entities, local governments and community-based organizations. And so since we've completed the plan in 2023, we've seen those organizations point to our plan as a strategic vision for our community and be successful in winning grants, and that's, and has really happened to us too. We've had a lot of success. Dr. Clark will talk about a couple of details of those, but we've really had success in assembling complex grant proposals with teams that we worked on with this plan, and pointing to the plan, and then winning funding into our community to take action. And so that's been a real positive result. And you know, as you also, as you think about this, I want to, you know, this issue of how we transition our housing stock to clean energy, how we address extreme heat, we found that these are, that some of these issues are really challenging issues. And so having a planning process where we could get people together and talk about these issues, you know, there's so much fear-mongering and myths and misinformation about these issues. It was really positive from that aspect of kind of helping understanding and helping diffuse some of the misunderstandings we have. So that was a critical outcome. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Clark, but I want to thank you again for this opportunity. You know, we're just really excited to see our neighbors to the south run with this and work on this critical issue, and I wish you guys all the best of luck on this.
Thanks, Josh. I hope you all can hear me okay and can see the slides. So again, I'm Susan Clark. I'm a professor of sustainability at the University of Buffalo. I was asked to chair the Erie County's Community Climate Change Task Force back in 2020. So I'm not an employee of the county, but I've worked really closely with them to help guide and give feedback on the, all the wonderful work they're doing related to climate and sustainability. So I think Josh set me up really well in describing why we went through this process of developing the Erie County Community Climate Action Plan, or the CCAP. Again, very proud to say that I played a role in. So it's meant to be a guide to Erie County's climate actions, representing the community's input and preferences for action. We intended the process of development from the beginning to have a really strong equity commitment and focus. The plan was released in December of last year, and almost, you know, three years in total of work by many volunteers across the county, and we're really proud to say it was unanimously adopted by our legislature back in February of this year. So I'm just going to describe a little bit how this plan is organized and, you know, about the stakeholder and public involvement, as well as how the plan has like set us up for success. So this is just giving a summary of how we've organized the CCAP plan. It has 10 working groups, which also make up the chapters of the plan as well, and these were all managed, the process of this was managed by the task force that I chair. So as you know, there are many different sectors within the climate change arena, and we felt it was most effective to create working groups around those sectors that you see featured here on the slide. Each working group had leaders external to the county who are considered experts or practitioners in those topics and sectors, and then there's staff from the county to help that working group, you know, proceed through the process. And each working group had a dozen or more volunteers who met monthly through about 18 months time period to make progress on developing their chapters. We also had some students involved from the University of Buffalo. That was a really great win-win for the students and folks in the, in the working groups, and the students could help them a lot with some outside research and other, and other things. And so the way we organized this was that the working groups you see at the top there, the climate justice, climate resiliency, and communicating progress groups, they were basically overarching groups that we felt needed to be consulted or helped to review some of the text of the chapters as they were being developed, to make sure each of the groups was considering, you know, justice and equity aspects, issues of climate adaptation and resiliency, not only mitigation, and also, you know, input from the community itself. So all of the working groups drafted their chapters in consultation with those three overarching chapters. So at the end of this 18-month process, we had these 10 working groups, and we had goals, strategies, and tangible action items that Erie County could take to mitigate and adapt to climate change. On this slide, just quickly, I want to show, these are some photos from the first pages of a couple of chapters in the plan that we developed, and what we did was we included photos from around the community that helped showcase existing efforts around climate action. So the left is the Buffalo Heritage Carousel. It's part of Buffalo's history, completely powered by solar panels and produces more electricity than it uses. On the right is a photo of a senior in one of our climate resiliency centers, and so it sort of captures how this, this community center in Buffalo is already considered a safe place and a refuge for our community members. Just quickly, we had a lot of stakeholder and public involvement in this plan. It, you know, we wanted to make sure the community was involved, was involved and was a priority here, and it also ties into the focus on equity.
That's one minute.
Okay, about a minute. So we had over 100 volunteers from 70 organizations involved in developing the plan and contributing to those 10 working groups that I mentioned. There were 75 presentations and 100 events where the CCAP was featured across the county. We had over 10,000 people opt in to receive email updates about the plan development, and we had a great turnout of about 250 people at a climate action showcase when we unveiled the first version of the plan in April of 2023. And this is my last slide. Just wanted to give an example of how this plan has set us up for success. So Erie County was recently awarded a $5.2 million grant, which aims to improve the tree canopy in Erie County, especially in disadvantaged communities. This slide gives you some high-level information about the project. I just wanted to note that we were one of only a few fully funded programs because we were able to leverage the partnerships and discussions and experience we had gained through developing the CCAP. And so we wouldn't have been able to do this without going through that process. So with that, I'll just end. Just thank you all for having us join you today, and it's just a pleasure being a part of all of this and the wonderful work that you're, you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and hopefully you could spend, stick around a little. We have one more speaker, and then we will entertain questions from all of council for all the speakers. So our next speaker, our last speaker, is Kiam Mansari. He's a changemaker with the Valley Clean Air Now, and welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kiam Mansari, and my path to this moment began in an unexpected place, a hospital bed in McKeesport. I was 15, a kid with dreams and a life filled with normal teenage activities, from acting in musicals to captaining my ultimate frisbee team. I lived in awe of the bridges and rivers that made Pittsburgh beautiful, unaware of the dangers hidden in the air I breathed. It was during an air inversion, a common event in the Mon Valley, that my life changed forever. As the inversion trap polluted air near the ground, my lungs began to fail. My asthma attack that day wasn't a typical episode. The air was thick with toxins from industrial pollution, and soon I was gasping, my lungs collapsing. By the time I had reached the hospital, I had stopped breathing. I died that day and was brought back to life. When I regained consciousness after two weeks in a coma, I knew my life had a new purpose. I realized I had survived for a reason, to confront the environmental injustice that nearly killed me and has harmed so many others in the Mon Valley. I learned that my story was not unique, and Claritin rates of asthma, cancer, and heart disease are higher than any other part of Allegheny County. Our children grow up breathing toxic air, and families live in the shadows of massive polluting facilities that strangle their future. These aren't just statistics. These are lives, children's lungs, our elders' hearts, burdened by this poisonous air. This brings me to why I stand before you today. Climate change is reshaping our world, and here in Allegheny County, we are not, we are at the crossroads of action and inaction. The air that almost killed me and the pollution that poisons our children is not just a local crisis, it is part of a global emergency, and we must act. We must act now. As we have seen in cities like Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, a proactive and well-structured climate action plan is not just a moral imperative, but also an economic, environmental, and public health necessity. Pittsburgh's Climate Action Plan highlights six focused areas that have driven real measurable progress: energy generation, building efficiency, transportation, waste management, food systems, and urban ecosystems. By integrating these aspects, Pittsburgh has set ambitious goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030 and pursue a carbon-neutral future by 2050, and we should strive for nothing less here in Allegheny County. A plan for our region must aim to reduce emissions, create local jobs in green energy sectors, and build community resilience against climate threats. Philadelphia's climate action playbook underscores the importance of integrating nature-based solutions and regional food systems into climate policy, ensuring that adaptation measures reach all residents, particularly those most vulnerable. We must build on that approach and ensure that our transition to a sustainable future leaves no one behind. Moreover, as Pittsburgh's Climate Action Plan acknowledges, our region has been historically tied to carbon-intensive industries. However, the time has come to reclaim our legacy, not as a city of smoke and steel, as a beacon of clean energy, innovation, and resilience. Our air quality is among the worst in the nation, with alarming rates of asthma and other health conditions tied directly to pollution. Reducing emissions and shifting to renewable energy sources will improve our health and bring about economic revitalization. The citizens of Allegheny County deserve leadership that champions sustainable energy, zero waste, and green spaces. Together, we can pursue a future that ensures economic growth by preserving the health and well-being of children, of our children and our grandchildren. I urge our leaders to adapt, implement a climate action plan tailored to Allegheny County's needs, one that aligns with ambitious and effective measures seen in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. Let's work together to make Allegheny County a leader in the fight against climate change. We live in a time when the consequences of our choices are coming home to roost. The earth speaks to us in ways that we can no longer ignore: rising waters, poison tear, shifting winds. We know what is coming, yet we hesitate, but we cannot afford to hesitate anymore, not here, not in Allegheny County. There is a power that we have, a power to change the world we are living in, to reshape it into something that does not choke us with every breath. Allegheny County holds that power, and it is time we started using it. This county has the authority to take bold steps towards decarbonization. It has the power over transportation, industry, agriculture, food systems, buildings, and the energy that fuels them all. This time, the time has come to stop thinking small and start embracing our authority. We have the means to change the way we build, move, grow, and live. The question is, do we have the will? We have the power to regulate, reimagine, and enact policies that pull us away from destruction and towards survival. We cannot wait for others to show us the way. We must take steps ourselves confidently, creatively, and know that what we do here matters, and what we choose today will echo long after us. But there is a lock on this power, the county council's inertia. Yes, our agencies hold authority, but they sit idle waiting for the council to act, guide, and give them instruction to move. It is time to counsel, it's time for council to wake up to this urgency of this moment. This waiting is a luxury that we can no longer afford. They must unleash these agencies to do the work that needs doing. This is not a time for timid steps, it's time for bold, deliberate movement. The future is not waiting for us, it is rushing towards us. If council cannot see this, then we must show them, and let's not forget that we have a duty written into the bones of this land, into the words of the Pennsylvania Constitution. The environmental right amendment binds us all to protect the air, the water, the land. It isn't a suggestion, it is the law. It applies to every level of government, state, city, and county, and in Allegheny County, we are bounded by this duty. We will not be the first confronted with this responsibility. In Hawaii, the U stood up, and the Vahvi H. dot, and demanded action. They used their constitutional right to force the government to decarbonize transportation, and held V Montana, it was the same. The people demanded their state address climate change, and the courts agreed. These are not just distant stories, they are warnings and examples, they remind us of our duty, and it is clear that inaction is not an option. And now we come to the heart of the matter, to Claritin and the Mon Valley. These places have borne the weight of our inaction. A few powerful facilities, massive in their pollution, strangle the air here. People live in the shadows, have struggled unheard and unseen for too long. These are not just numbers-- These are not just numbers on reports, these are human lives, our children's lungs, our elders' hearts. The entire community is struggling to breathe while corporations continue to poison the air. In the case of Claritin and the Mon Valley, health impacts from industrial pollution are profound and unmistakable. The air surrounding these facilities carries more than just toxins, it carries the weight of disease suffering and injustice. Rates of chronic disease, chronic pulmonary disease, lung function decline, cancers are disproportionately high compared to the rest of the county. Our children, the exposure to toxic air has increased the likelihood of conditions like leukemia, asthma, and even cognitive impairments. The age-adjusted death rate due to cancer in Claritin is 17% higher than the rest of Allegheny County. For heart disease, the numbers are even staggering, it's 63% higher than the county average. Asthma rates in Claritin are nearly three times the national average for children, and more than half of these cases are uncontrolled, meaning they lead to severe daily symptoms like myself. This is not a public health crisis, this is a violation of the basic human right to breathe clean air. The people of Claritin live in the shadow of these facilities, burdened by the pollution that others profit from. This cannot be overlooked any longer. Addressing major greenhouse emitters, particularly those in the Mon Valley, must be a central part to any climate action plan for Allegheny County. We cannot claim to fight climate change without confronting the industries that are poisoning our people and our planet. This is not, this can no longer be the way of things. If we are to have a future, these places must be at the center of our plan. We cannot look away from major polluters. We cannot pretend that the people of the Mon Valley will simply endure. They deserve better, and this county has a power to give them better. We stand on the edge of a knife. The choices we make here today will determine whether we continue to destroy or we choose to heal. The earth will continue with or without us, but we can shape our place in it. Allegheny County must rise to meet this challenge. We must use our authority fully and confidently. We must push our council to enact and fulfill our legal duty to protect this earth. There is more, there is no more time to waste. The future is already here, demanding something better of us. Thank you.
Now it's, we'll open it up to council if anyone has any questions for any of our invited guests. Would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess I would direct the question to our Sustainability Director, Director Preshak, if you, if you, if you might. And so just in terms of having a sense of where you are in the process, apparently the county is working with a consulting group to get the ball rolling here. Could you talk a bit about that?
So we haven't selected the consultant team yet. Basically, when we, as I mentioned, we put out a request for statement of qualifications. We went through those ten submissions of ten different project teams and shortlisted them. So through that shortlist, we then asked for a full proposal, which was due today. And so our next step is to review those, there are two full proposals, to review those proposals. And then our evaluation team, which is the internal county group, will possibly re-interview them. It's the same project teams we interviewed during the shortlist process and then select one to move forward with. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And I guess the other question is, in selecting a group to kind of drive this, does our sustainability department, so to speak, do you have, do you have the staff to support the efforts that will, again, inform choices, decisions, recommendations that are made by this group?
So in the capacity for our staff right now, we have three people, myself and two sustainability specialists. We are hiring for a deputy director to help fill that capacity, as well as a financial and administration coordinator. And we did ask council for two additional positions for our next year's budget. And so, or will be, I guess, it has been presented. But capacity-wise, we don't intend to have the sustainability department be the only county department involved. This will be an entire county process. So we'll have representatives from the Health Department, Economic Development, Parks Department, all of them involved. And so through that effort, we should have the capacity to lead this effort along with those consultant teams.
Great, great.
Does that help?
Great, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Nick Currie?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Preetio, for today, for organizing this hearing and for all of the individuals who spoke and for those who will come and speak before us. Apologies for being on the phone for the first portion of the meeting, but I did hear everyone. My, I don't necessarily think I have a question, but, you know, as everyone in this room can fully acknowledge, this issue that we're talking about today is the one that will impact and affect every single individual in this county, as well as the visitors. And it will impact all future generations. It will impact all of our environment, as we know. It will impact our economy. It will impact our property. So climate change, as you heard from Dr. DiMarco, is, we talk about this existential threat, we're here. We are at the tipping point. And if we don't take action now, there is no turning back. And so, you know, I applied the efforts that are all before us, and it will have to be a community-wide effort. It will have to involve all voices from every corner of this county to actively participate. And so with that said, you know, one of the things I was thinking about is that when the county goes and embarks upon this in full, I would really love the transparency to be front and center of this effort. And so, and what that means is, the IT department is probably cringing as they're going to hear me say this, but, you know, I would really like to have a website dedicated to this. I know we have to be within the county mandate of security issues and such, but if you go to the county website, I don't want this to be lost. This is too important of an issue, that it needs its own space, especially because there's going to be so much collaboration, as I'm hearing, across the county to make this work and to do it right. And so with that said, you know, I'm thinking a dashboard, and I'm thinking our goals and our measurements and our objectives, and we're really putting that forth in the, in the website, and we could be monitoring that, and anybody can go on at any time and see the progress that's being made, right? Because the goal will be to have this progress continue for years to come. Frankly, I don't know if we're ever going to get there, right? We will always have more work to do. And, and so from the result of this effort, you know, I really think that having some comprehensive approach to it, and I commend you and the county for the work that happens already and the work that has been done to addressing climate change. And internally, within the county systems, you know, Port Authority, as you all remember, was before us with their budget discussions last year, and they talked about climate as the initiative and the investment that they were making. We were out at the airport, and we see investment that they're making. But it certainly goes beyond the four walls of the county. And so as you talked about, all of the different folks and the different agencies and organizations that are a part of that and have been doing work for many years, that's why I think that this comprehensive approach to, it all has to be housed somewhere, right? Because it's too big of an effort. And I really appreciate the comments made in terms of environmental justice being front and center of this work, because we know children in predominantly black and brown communities are more impacted than children in predominantly white communities. And, and so, you know, look at the asthma rates that the county Health Department has shown us. That demonstrates that, right, that issue as well. Look at the point sources and where they're located across this county and the communities that reside in those, in those neighborhoods. And, you know, I go back to the Dr. Debbie Gentile's reports that she had done years ago that showed that children who resided next to those point sources had asthma rates of nearly 30%. Now think about what the national average is, somewhere between like 6% and 8%. We were at 30% asthma rates in those communities. That's unheard of. So again, you know, that's why this is a, has to be a collaborative approach with all of the voices around this table. And so one of the questions I ask is, I really appreciated hearing about 70 public meetings and in an 18-month process, because it wasn't rushed, right? It was methodical, it was thoughtful, it was inclusive. And so with all that said, is the charge going to be with this consulting agency that will be hired to really think through how they're going to engage all of the individuals who've been working on this effort now for, at least, you know, the folks who've been working from a community-based climate action approach for at least a year, you know, what will that look like in terms of the consultant's work and how they engage the hard work that has been done to date and how that's folded into this process?
So that's definitely something that we want to make sure that it is integrated. This process, as we've mentioned, not just the community folks that have been doing this effort, but all of the other plans that already exist in the region. It's important that all of that work has already been done, let's not ignore it, right? So I think we still yet again have to meet with a consultant company, so I can't speak to a specific timeline, but my intention would be those first steps are to do all of that review process that I mentioned, pull all of this data that's already been done and gather it together, and then come up with that strategy. So engagement process will not be the first thing. We want to set the baseline for everything that's already been done and then work on that engagement process.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there are so many data sets and data points that it will take time to gather all that. And I suspect, you know, between what Connect has and the Western Pennsylvania Regional Data Center and such, you know, there's, and the Health Department, and there's, there's so many data sets that it will be a lot to absorb and to gather. But I would also say that I would hope that, and frankly, beyond hope, encourage, what words can we use that can be even stronger? You know, I would want that consultant to sit down with that group of individuals and have a working meeting, a working dialogue to understand all of that's been done, to put toward the process. I'll stop there and turn it over to my colleagues who may have some questions.
Again, thank you for coordinating this. This really doesn't go to the people in this room, it's more for the people that are unaware of this conversation that's taking place or don't want to pay attention to it. They might not believe in science, but science certainly believes in them. And the reason I say that is, this is, this is a major issue, and to the people who can overlook this every day and plead ignorance, embrace the change that we're working towards today, because if those changes aren't implemented, you're really not going to like the changes that need to take place five to 10 years to make up for the time that we lose today. I do just want to stress this as well. As much as this is a county goal, this is a global issue, and we have close to nine billion people in the world today. Think about that number, think about the pummeling that the earth takes every day for nine billion people to drink clean water, to eat food. And when I think about it, I, I'm kind of amazed how short our memories can be sometimes if we think back to the pandemic even four years ago, when the world came to a halt, and how quickly the world showed us how little it needed us. I just say that, be mindful of that. Mother Nature is the strongest force on earth, and all the technology that we have is nothing in the face of it. So again, my plea is to the people, not in this room, but to the people who might not be paying attention, embrace these changes now, recognize that this isn't ideology, this is, this is math, this is science, this is predicated on data. Embrace these changes so that we don't have to be draconian five to 10 years from now to make up for the time that we've lost today. Thank you.
Councilmember Macy?
No questions. I just appreciate that everybody's coming here. I live in the Mon Valley and I've lived there for all my life. I'm almost 76 years old and I'm still learning.
Bring your microphone.
Always thought I had a big mouth, but maybe not. As I was saying, I lived in the Mon Valley all my life, I'm almost 76 years old, I worked in the steel mills, family members worked in the steel mills, and I'm still learning. And as a member of the Sustainability and Green Initiative, this is very enlightening, and I will share what I'm learning with those individuals in my community that are naysayers. Thank you.
Been delus here with verbiage for the past hour, hour and a half. I'm not going to take too much time, but I want to just say to you, I'm on the CCAC Board of Trustees. And ladies and gentlemen, what we're talking about starts with education. If we don't educate our young children coming up, the smallest kids in kindergarten all the way up to college, if we don't get those, if we don't get their attention, all this is going to be for naught, because they are the future. So we can preach the gospel, but we're preaching the gospel to each other.
Yep.
We've got to get word out through, and I'm working on trying to get CCAC to take on some programs and bring some people in, some real people.
Real people.
Who live this every day, not professors that haven't been in the real world for 10 years. You know, they write their dissertations, they write everything, and that's all fine and good, but they don't live every day. I represent Claritin. I know, I smell Claritin when I'm about half a mile away. I know what goes on there. The problem is, do you know at one time, Claritin had 27,000 people in their city? You know what they're done to? Less than 7,000. There's a reason for that. So I plead with you to think about education. That's the key, ladies and gentlemen, for everything. We have to get these, we have to get the kids' attention, get them to understand that their world, their future depends on what they do, not what we do, but what they do in the future. Thank you very much.
I'd want to thank all the invited guests, this is wonderful. Oh, one more.
And so, I mean, the county manager is not here, he is just warming up to the job that he's been on for maybe a week. But, you know, one of the challenges that we face as a body is that there are limitations on the reach of our authority. So we came to realize that a number of years ago with respect to our efforts to create a civilian police, independent civilian police review board. And lo and behold, of course, we have jurisdiction over the county police, but we really don't have any reach beyond the county police. So we have 132 municipalities, last I checked, and, you know, we have no authority there. And, and we've also, we're also considering a single-use plastic ban at the county level, but making that operational within the municipalities, and some municipalities have, you know, gone down that path and created such programs, is a real barrier, a real limitation. So I guess as we take a look at the climate action plan, what are you contemplating the scale, the scope of that plan will be? I mean, are we looking just at county government operations, or are we looking at all of those municipalities that, you know, have a life of their own and independence of their own? Are we looking at looping them into this as well? And how do we, you know, how do we go about doing that, given the legal barriers that we face?
So as of now, the current scope is definitely going to have a heavy focus on county operations, what we can control. However, we recognize, as others have mentioned here tonight, that the county has a However, we recognize, as others have mentioned here tonight, that the county has a leadership opportunity in this. And so I think from that approach is how we'll probably start to incorporate and provide some guidance to the other municipalities. You have a lot of municipalities that have already done climate action plans and Connect has done one for a larger group. And so I think the intention we have is to look at what they've already pulled together and use that as a framework for that leadership opportunity. And that would be for, we've talked about for businesses, residents, and the municipalities. Keep in mind, too, we're going to be doing a comprehensive plan, which definitely involves the municipalities and the county's position there. And so our hope is to actually incorporate climate action strategies throughout both the COP Plan, which makes sense at the COP Plan, and then the Climate Action Plan, which makes sense as part of the Climate Action Plan. So I think right now, the current scope is at a leadership level. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. So maybe some unfriendly persuasion outside of the county, you know, well, I mean, you know, carrot and stick, I mean, I guess you'll have to contemplate that as you move along.
And one of the recommend, the recognition things that we've realized as we've gone through this process that there is, and I think the Erie County folks on the call had mentioned it, there's a lot of misunderstanding perhaps and misinformation. And so we're hoping to also do education and outreach on what is the jurisdiction of the county? At what level are you looking at authorizing different policies? State level, county level, at an authority level, at the municipal level? And so I think throughout this process, that's something else that'll have to take place, is a recognition of what do we have the power to influence?
Great, great. Thank you.
Sure.
So I think that's a great question then to follow up with Dr. Clark in terms of Erie County. Is your government structure the same in that there's the county, county seat, and then municipalities within that all operate independently at a local government level?
Yeah, that's my understanding. I wish Josh was here. He could, you know, confirm that as, you know, working for the county, but yes, that's my understanding.
And so were there things that were adopted at the county level through your CCAP that would require those municipalities to conduct themselves in a certain way, to do certain initiatives or activities then that would be in compliance with the CCAP? Or is it at the county level only?
It's really at the county level. It sets up priorities, strategies, and actions, but doesn't enforce anything across municipalities. It sort of sets that vision and identifies priorities, is how I would describe it.
Do you think that you had every municipality engaged in the process through those different work groups and such?
We had many, but not all of them.
Okay. You know, I just, it seems as though that could be one of the keys early on to success is making certain that all of the municipalities have some type of representation. So the more that people are invested in the plan, they have a commitment to it and bring it back to their municipalities to hopefully implement elements of it that are feasible and within their reach. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to really thank all the guests and it was wonderful and all the questions. Cognizance of everyone's time here, so I think it's a good time to start public comment. Thank you.
Okay. The first group of five will be Deborah Smith. She will be followed by Chief Puma Chakmamjology, Helen Gerhardt, Maren Cook, and Claire Cohen. And all public speakers, please go to the podium.
Good afternoon and thank you for convening this really important hearing. My name is Deborah Smith and I'm speaking today as a Climate Reality Project Leader in southwestern PA and a member of the Breathe Project, an Allegheny resident and an asthma sufferer. Climate change is already taking a toll on county residents, especially the most vulnerable among us, who live in areas we identify as environmental justice communities. This includes more than 15,000 people, primarily in the Mon Valley and Pittsburgh, 27% of all our residents, according to the DEP. Finding ways to cut greenhouse gases and reduce the region's carbon footprint is critical, but this plan must go beyond energy efficiency, county operations, electrical vehicles, and so forth. It must also include broader measures that address areas where people live and will be most at risk. Climate change and its associated impacts are already affecting the food we eat and the air we breathe. Extreme weather events and warming will exacerbate. The spread of pests like ticks and mosquitoes and diseases, which we're currently seeing, cause mold to grow in basements, especially in communities with old housing stock, of which we have plenty, and bring flooding landsides and harm to infrastructure like railways and bridges. In creating this plan, let's look to plans that have stepped up and done climate planning right. Allegheny County should be among those regions in the country that can be held up as a holistic template of a CAP. The Pittsburgh Climate Action Plan 3.0 was created through a deliberate process of civic engagement that included more than 400 residents representing 90 organizations from the Pittsburgh business community and other sectors. Erie County, as we have seen, has created an admirable equity-centered climate action plan task force that identifies actions the county can take to help communities, especially the most vulnerable. Like Erie, a good cap must take a multi-sector approach, including agriculture and food systems, commercial business, small business, industry, universities, school districts, tech companies, healthcare providers, hospitals, insurers, banking utilities, and community groups. To achieve this, we ask the following of our leaders, you. Create a truly inclusive, climety, equity-based plan by organizing a climate action plan task force that includes a majority of environmental justice community members and advocates for communities of color, people with disabilities, immigrants, climate refugees, indigenous peoples, LGBTQ people, unhoused people, youth, and rural communities. Please, 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 hire a consultant with a record of commitment to an inclusive process and has no ties to the fossil fuel industry. If the most vulnerable people in our community are not included, everyone in our community will be at risk. We need to work together to make this happen, engage in a collective commitment into fostering a sustainable and just future for our Allegheny County, just as our executive Sarah Innamorato has pledged to us to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us here today. This is a warning. Our ecosystem is in extreme distress. I'm speaking for Mother Earth, Gaia, in fossil fuels, dependencies, and Claritin. I'm Chief Puma Chakmamjology, and my people are hidden in plain sight in the communities identified as black and brown. Fracking supporters believe natural gas is a climate solution as they shut down high-carbon emission polluting coal plants by bringing on more gas plants fired by frac gas. Studies from NOAA, the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, suggest that fracking causes methane, a natural gas leakage into the atmosphere, causing an increase in climate pollution. Methane is much weaker insulator than carbon dioxide, so it's very problematic to think that natural gas is going to be a solution to climate change. Fracking sites' emissions affect the people, damaging health by increased carcinogenic, toxic effects, including genotoxicity, immunotoxicity occurring in workers. Even exposure to low levels of HSC benzene are found in the placenta and breast milk of mothers. While young people and infants are more susceptible with elevated risk of leukemia and birth defects, fracking and climate change together are a national and global threat. Methane is a more powerful greenhouse than carbon dioxide and within a 100-year period is roughly 35 times worse than carbon dioxide. While over 20-year period, which is the critical time that we're in right now, 86 times more dangerous than carbon dioxide. Thus, fracking, placing oil with gas is just digging ourselves into a bigger hole of disaster. The reason that I hadn't, that it hadn't been acknowledged in the past is that the information of methane leakage was relatively new. We knew, we knew it was powerful greenhouse gas, just didn't know how much leaking into the atmosphere. We now know better. So let's do better for all of the people. Allegheny County Council and the Health Department can do better for all of us. The numbers don't have much more than a few percents before natural gas is much worse than coal in terms of greenhouse. So therefore, we have to control both oil and gas at the same time and reduce them both to move to renewable sources as quickly as we can. Now is the time to create a robust cap that's inclusive. The county has to create financial incentives to move in those directions by including and engaging in compensating Aboriginal Americans and Black identifying communities and people of colors and all of the other marginalized communities. And our youth have to be engaged because we are the frontline communities. Through green energy education initiatives and curriculums, creating real-world solutions, there is a well-established link between environmental destruction and human rights violations. To destroy our land without our consent is a violation of United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People and the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. The ruling is a determination by a respected international court that fracking and climate change constitute massive violations of the Universal Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People.
I live in Pittsburgh. And thank you so much, Anita, for convening this hearing. Thank you to all of our speakers today. And thank you for the commitment of so many people in this room to true justice and climate action plan that includes all of the folks that are most impacted by climate change, those that have experienced systemic discrimination and environmental racism, as leaders of the process. So I will reiterate this, the call for a community task force to actively partner with the county Department of Sustainability and any hired CAP support services, a task force that has real power to help lead a fully inclusive public process, education, planning, budgeting, and implementation for the long haul. That community task force should be absolutely committed to including residents of environmental justice communities that bear the highest impacts of climate change, worker organizations and unions, and groups that have experienced systemic discrimination. The county needs to be committed to embedding active environmental justice in every aspect of the cap, from the public input process, to planning, to implementation, to assessment metrics, to future cap revisions based on incomes, on outcomes. At all times, racial, disability, gender, and migrant justice must be centered. We, as a coalition, we agree that the scope of the cap must expand beyond just Allegheny County operations to include community resilience, harm prevention, and transformative climate mitigation and adaptive adaptation across a wide range of community sectors. And we need an Allegheny County budget that supports all of the above goals. I was chair, I served on the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations, which upheld civil rights in the city of Pittsburgh, and I was chair of the Affirmatively Furthering for Housing Task Force. We had a two-year process. We provided childcare, we provided interpretation and translation when it was requested, we provided food, we made sure that our meetings were all across the county and in the city and those communities that had been disinvested, Black and Brown communities. We made sure that we did massive outreach to make sure that the people who lived in those communities knew about those meetings and could participate. It's very possible. Thank you.
My name is Maren Cook and I live in Pittsburgh. I'm a planetary scientist by training, so I have a deep understanding of climate change. I'm also a land steward and sometimes farmer, so I also think a great deal about climate change impacts in our region, which are many. In my remarks, I'm going to be making a number of connections. Since agriculture is such an important industry in Pennsylvania, droughts and storm events challenge crop farmers, while increased temperatures stress both flora, including crops, and fauna, including livestock, and extend the reproductive season for ticks and other disease vectors, as Deb mentioned. We are fortunate to have some leeway, though. It could get a little warmer, a little wetter, a little drier, and people would be able to live here. Hence, it is likely that we will be seeing more and more climate refugees from coastal regions and around the world, and they will become part of our community. However, despite that leeway, with global warming come much more extreme storm events, in between which are long dry spells. With our clay soils and hilly topography, Allegheny County is prime for flooding and landslides. We know that trees help to hold slopes and regulate water, though, so forest stewardship and forest expansion certainly have to be part of a comprehensive climate action plan. An effective climate action plan needs to address both adaptation, increasing resiliency to these hazards, and mitigation, reducing fossil carbon emissions through renewables, efficiency, and conservation. And it needs to do so not only for the county's own operations, buildings, fleets, parks, and such, but for the wider community and across all sectors. On the mitigation side, we need to transition to renewable energy and use less of it. We have allowed our county and region to become too dependent on fracking and petrochemicals when we could be a leader in renewables and other green technologies. Fracking fragments forests, pollutes waterways, reduces biodiversity, and creates a tremendous amount of waste material, much of which is strongly radioactive, and is being stored and processed unsafely, sometimes even spread on roads. People living near fracking experience excess cancer, low birth weight, skin and respiratory problems, and many other health afflictions. The toxic burden of air and water emissions, along with light and sound pollution, leading to lack of sleep and general stress. These health impacts are copiously documented in an annual compendium by Physicians for Social Responsibility, not to mention accidents like well blowouts, pipeline explosions, and the inevitable leakage of methane and other gases from every portion of the supply stream, including abandoned and orphaned wells. Methane is over 80 times as potent as carbon dioxide for climate impact on the appropriate timescale, not just when we have to do something about it. Methane only lasts about a decade in the atmosphere, so it's kind of a low-hanging fruit in terms of what we can control and how soon. Carbon dioxide, on the other hand, is essentially forever lasting on the order of 10,000 years. We have to deal with that, too. But we can have strong impact by acting fast on methane. Our previous county executive once told me in conversation that Pittsburgh would never have recovered from the loss of the steel industry without gas. He was apparently forgetting about eds and meds, the higher education and healthcare industries that are vital to our regional economy. And the green energy transition will create countless more jobs, potentially union jobs, most if not all safer than coal mining or handling radioactive frac waste. I hear the bell. My comments are longer. I will send them.
I'll take that as a no. The next five will be Raina Ripple, Kellyanne Ferkettic, Natasha Washington, Stephanie Almer, and Benjamin Chisar.
Good evening and thank you, everyone on council. This has been an amazing event and I'm just really happy to see everyone here and hear everyone's comments, so I'll be quick. So my name is Raina Ripple, and while I am a resident of Washington County, I work primarily in Allegheny County as the Executive Director of Communitopia. We work to engage and empower high school students, educators, and school districts to learn about and take action on climate change. Thank you for your comments earlier. With the recent passage of the Pittsburgh Public School Sustainability Resolution, our Pittsburgh Youth for Climate Action students were able to elevate their priorities for PPS to tackle climate change. Similarly, as coordinator of the yearly Pittsburgh Youth Climate Action Summit, we know students want action now. The Allegheny Climate Action Plan, therefore, could not come soon enough and has to incorporate action happening at schools with nonprofits and many of our innovative tech startups as well. As a current master's student in the Duquesne Entrepreneurial Leadership Program, I am energized by the diverse possibilities for Allegheny County neighborhoods and the future of clean energy and green collar jobs, especially for residents who once upon a time and generationally had to settle for dirty, dangerous jobs. Everyone here hopefully will agree, we are facing down a global crisis which hasn't been addressed for far too long. I must also share a cautionary tale, coming from Washington County, which is why I live there. there, about the intense and ongoing dangers of investing our future in dirty obsolete fuels and the building blocks of plastic. As the former Executive Director of the Environmental Health Project, I can testify and have seen firsthand the human health and ecological damage fracking has done to our small towns and neighborhoods. Plastic and gas have their place, but they increasingly need to be in our rearview mirror, not as the only or even a primary economic path forward. Overall, I will say that similar to Erie County, we have an opportunity to take leadership and be a climate refuge region for the country, if not the world. I'll skip ahead a little bit. What If We Get It Right is the title of my favorite climate scientist's new book from Ayana Elizabeth Johnson, What If Just Imagine? Thank you.
Hello, I appreciate the opportunity to give feedback and tell you where I stand on what is going on. My name's Kellyanne Ferkettic. I reside in Elizabeth Township, which is part of the Elizabeth Forward School District, which is the most southern area in all of Allegheny County. I chose to settle here for my son to enjoy the beautiful community that I loved and grew up in. However, after a change in our township's Board of Commissioners, key ordinances were altered despite public opposition, opening the door for power plants, fracking operations, compressor stations. Our concerns were ignored even when a fracking pad was proposed just 1,700 feet from our high school, which has now been built. As a parent, this hits close to home. My son would be spending years near this site. Families near fracking developments report serious health issues, which were echoed by medical professionals and experts. In 2020, the Wolf Administration commissioned a $2.5 million study by the University of Pittsburgh, which later confirmed our fears. Children near fracking sites are five to 10 times more likely to develop lymphoma. Asthma attacks are also more frequent, along with the numerous other afflictions that can occur. Despite this, local leaders continue to push for more fracking next to our school. They're also now allowing leases on horizontal drilling underneath all of our elementary schools and our communities. With the recent expansion of our high school, they are now combining our middle school into the high school. Even more students now will be exposed for multiple years, up to six years. Our schools lack air conditioning, leaving windows open and increasing the risks. Also, this fracking is right next to our county park, which I think, our park that is there, Round Hill, is probably the best county park, but I'm, you know. But they've also just put a compressor station next to it. How can, you're supposed to go to a park to enjoy clean air. You can't do that with your putting these right next to it. The body of research has grown to include a 2023 study linking fracking to cancer and asthma. Hundreds of peer-reviewed studies confirm the dangers, yet industry promises remain hollow. It is clear that this industry puts profits over people. I call on our county executive, Seriana Murato, our county council, and the Allegheny County Department of Sustainability to work with community partners to establish an active and engaged Allegheny County Action Plan Community Task Force. The folks that are most affected should have a voice in the decisions that are being made. You spoke about educating. 100%. Where we live, there is no education going on. This is going on right next to the school? Nothing. I also gave comment recently at the Allegheny Board of Health, to which I did not finish those comments then either, but I would like to give you an opportunity to read those comments. I just don't want you to read them, I want you to hear my words.
Oh, sorry. Can I do without the thing? Hello, everybody. My name is Natasha Wash, I can't. All right, we're good now. Hi, everybody. My name is Natasha Washington. I am the Communications Manager for the Breathe Project. I am also a Wilkinsburg Councilwoman, and I have been doing environmental justice organizing for over 10 years. I heard amazing testimony, and there are many more people that can give amazing testimony about what's happening in the community, so I'm going to focus on, I'm so sorry, I'm going to focus on municipal engagement as a new councilwoman. So one thing that I'm finding is that there are these vastly large environmental issues that span throughout our county, and our municipalities are so divided and so strict on our budgets, which we have little of, and capacity, which we also have little of, that we are always looking to our county to be a foundational leader and support in that. There are many climate issues that I find in my county, and I don't know why this is doing that. There are many climate issues I find in my county, from flooding issues to trees falling over our power lines in our houses, litter and debris, to our crumbling infrastructure, including our train railways that we fear derailment on. Among many other issues, we don't have the capacity to do it, neither have a plan for it, yet there are many federal grants that are coming down, and because we don't have plans like many of our municipalities. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Am I, can y'all hear me now? Too close.
Stay maybe four or five inches away.
Can y'all hear me from here? Okay, I'm so sorry. So for our municipalities, we're always trying to find funds and capacity to build up so that we can deal with these environmental issues, but a lot of us are behind on our comprehensive planning. Many municipalities don't have the funding and capacity to even update these plans that should be updated every eight years. So we hope that when you do this foundational plan, not only do you set a foundation for what we should do in our county, but you also are engaging municipalities, especially borough managers, our Department of Public Works, our safety officers, to ensure that we're all following this plan and to help us in getting financial support as well collectively as a county, so that we can deal with our larger infrastructure issues that don't just span in one area, but span in multiple areas. Because it's really hard to have meetings with many municipal leaders to try to figure out how we can collectively, with our borough issues that we already have piling up on non-environmental issues, to figure out how we can solve this issue on a grant that we might not get. So I hope that you all come out to every municipality and have engagement sessions directly in each community, so that we can all collectively have a climate plan, and it can start other municipalities to have their own plan as well. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, everyone, for listening, and especially for all your comments. They've just been so fantastic. Anyway, I'm Stephanie Almer, and I live in Edgewood. There is so much we need to address in a climate action plan, but there is no action that we can take that will go further to slow the progress of climate change than turning off the tap, stopping the actual production of fossil fuels. We need a county-wide ban on all new fracking projects. Yes, this is difficult. Yes, it will be an end to an easy source of revenue for the county. Yes, neither EQT, the Building Trade and Construction Union, or all the other vested interests will be happy. But not only is instituting a ban on fracking doable, it absolutely must be done, for it is our only hope for a livable future for all of us. Continuing business as usual is only going to lead to the increasingly rapid destruction of our infrastructure and the continued destabilization of our food supplies, eventualities that will become progressively more expensive for taxpayers to bear. We all know by now the many harmful effects of fracking on our air, water, soil, habitat, climate, and communities. Turning to renewables for our energy sources will reduce our energy costs in the long run. We have more than enough currently active gas wells to see us through a transition to 100% renewable energy. Turning to renewables for our energy sources will also open new opportunities for out-of-work oil and gas workers, opportunities like geothermal projects, green manufacturing, green retrofitting of existing buildings, or solar panel installations. Often, oil and gas workers complain that green jobs require new training and do not pay as well as their old jobs, but there are federal dollars available for oil and gas workers retraining. Let's take advantage of those dollars. And as far as pay, let's establish policies that would ensure good pay for green jobs, jobs that, by the way, won't make the workers and their neighbors sick. People drawn to a region by the prospect of more drilling are usually just temporary residents. The reality is, no one wants to live or recreate next to a drilling site or compressor station. What if, just for example, instead of allowing the dirty, dangerous, and exploitive natural gas industry to make free use of our rivers and streams, permanently polluting our waters, what if fracking were banned? Finally, we would have a chance to reclaim Allegheny County's waterways, some of our county's most valuable assets, and begin to create a region that is truly a model for green living. We have a choice. We can either change how we live now on our own terms, or Mother Nature will change how we live for us. Thank you.
Air is life, yet our air is poison. Clean air is our constitutional right, or supposed to be. What other parts of the Constitution or state laws are so roundly intentionally violated by public officials? Sheriff deputies? What other laws and the citizens of this room can we violate? We are so blessed to live in one of the most beautiful metropolitan areas in the world. Imagine if the polluters didn't own our politicians and media. All pollution is corruption. I was shocked to see this meeting so poorly noticed. The public should have a right to be heard about these very important issues. This community desperately needs a cap, just like it needs new leaders. The first step in this plan should be to stop the existing pollution. That means sending a message to all major source Title V polluters that Allegheny is no longer a welcome place. That means a county-wide ban on fracking and mining. That means prohibiting outflows into our rivers and tributaries. That means properly funding from the county budget the functions of pollution control. That means that all permits and fines and the revenues generated should go to the Clean Air Fund, not to operations. I don't care about the jobs. U.S. Steel keeps the Mon Valley polluted so they can produce shiny but dirty steel for American carmakers. All major source polluters should leave this county immediately. The pollution that your political corruption facilitates kills people and takes years off lives. The pollution you facilitate does not remain in this region, it is shared with the world. That is what we give the world, pollution, climate change, and all its horror. I call it the catalog of consequences. For the record, just some. The adverse health impacts: nausea, COPD, asthma, lung and respiratory ailments, fertility and pregnancy issues, cardiovascular disease, kidney disease, stroke, dementia, Alzheimer's, damage to the central nervous system, mental health, and an increase in deaths. The consequences of global climate change: increased temperatures, land and sea, changes to the jet stream, Gulf Stream, weather patterns, AMOC, which catalogs extreme weather events, increased hurricanes, landslides, tornadoes, rain events, flooding, lack of fresh water, increased drought, extreme heat, heat casualties, loss of arable land, biodiversity, coral reefs, increase in migration, conflict, extinctions, and war. You must also be wary of mosquito-borne disease with the increased range due to your love of pollution. If this council cannot reduce pollution, then tell the public why. The future is a green one. A green economy based here in Allegheny County can remake the world. We have a unique ability to facilitate with our ingenuity, capital, and the best workforce on the planet. We can make all things green here in Allegheny. We can build thousands of new affordable green housing units to restore our population growth for the climate refugees sure to come and enhance a new economy. We can imagine a green Allegheny County with a booming economy. It's easy if you try, but go ahead, pass this CAP as a last act of performance art and then resign. May God bless Allegheny County and all who call her home.
Our next group of five is Thaddeus Popovich, followed by Sarah Tang, Julia Mente, Mark Dixon, and Tom Bailey.
I don't have a prepared speech like all these other community leaders. When I got an email notification that this was happening, I've never done anything like this before, but I felt impelled to come and share my family's story. So my great-grandmother on my mother's side died of COPD in the Mon Valley. I definitely think related to the air pollution. I don't think it was caused by anything else. My parents still live in the house that my mother grew up in, in Allegheny County, down in the Mon Valley, right off of Route 51, near the Slag Mountain and Century 3 Mall. There are large rocks that are in my parents' yard that have been there since my mother was a young girl. My entire life, they have been the same color until maybe about five years ago, they turned totally black. We tried to power wash them, and we couldn't even quite get it all off, but we got a lot of it off to get that nice stone color back. They're black again. I brought it up with some friends of mine who work on the SmellPGH app over with CMU, I believe it is, and they said, oh, that doesn't make sense, the air from Claritin wouldn't be blowing that way. So I'm not really sure what's going on, all I know is what I see. I also have an autoimmune condition that I think gets really aggravated by the air pollution. I can't prove anything, and of course, this is something that's not an overt problem that doctors and healthcare workers can handle, so I just have to kind of suffer in an invisible way, as do a lot of my friends, but I've noticed that my headaches, my nausea, and my other symptoms do increase on the days where we're in the red for air quality emissions, so I do think there's a link. And I think, I just want to speak to what other folks have been sharing, we're the canaries in the coal mine, it's going to affect everyone eventually. And just to share that story, I think there are a lot of leaders in this room, and that gives me a lot of hope, and I'm really inspired, so thank you for listening.
My name is Julia Mente. I am an Allegheny County resident, and I'm a member of the Climate Action Plan Justice Coalition. I'm gonna skip my notes about the effects of climate change, because I think we're all already gonna have nightmares tonight, so I'll just go on to talk about funding. So this call for a community task force that the Climate Action Plan Justice Coalition is making is an important one. We want real decision-making power in the development, funding, and implementation of the climate action plan. In order to do that, we need funding in the 2025 budget to be able to reflect the importance of this task force that we are asking for. So our task force should reflect substantive representation from workers and unions and groups most impacted by systemic discrimination, including environmental justice communities, and the people most historically impacted by environmental crises, and most likely to be impacted by future changes to our climate. In order to make the community task force successful, we require funding to be added to the 2025 county budget in order to both help the Department of Sustainability with their staffing needs and issues that were mentioned, as well as showing a real commitment to the community task force. This will mean that we need to have a thorough process, which has already been mentioned many times about the different municipalities that need to be involved in this process. And we also need this process to be timely. We're talking about a massive process, but we also know the short timeframe that we have with climate change. So in order for you to fit that in and be thorough and timely, that's going to take a funding commitment. The way that Allegheny County spends our money reflects the values and priorities of our leaders, and a just and equitable climate transition must be a priority in Allegheny County, and a successful climate transition will take commitment from the highest leadership in Allegheny County to be a success. The 2025 county budget is a climate issue, and we hope to see the county executive and county council county council present an environmentally just budget and plan for 2025. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Bailey. My wife and I live in Penn Hills. The three parts I'd like to hit tonight are: Where is the EPA on greenhouse gases? What it is to be a trustee? And money is no good if you can't breathe. The harms associated with climate change are serious and well-recognized. The government's own objective assessments of the relevant science and a strong consensus among qualified experts indicate that global warming threatens, among other things, to precipitate rise in sea levels, severe and irreversible changes to natural ecosystems, a significant reduction in winter snowpack with a direct and important economic consequences, and increases the spread of disease and the ferocity of weather events. That's a U.S. Supreme Court case of Massachusetts versus EPA. It's from 2007. That's the case that the EPA said, "Well, we'd like to deal something with the greenhouse gases," but they haven't since 2007. So what's the county gonna do about that? The Clean Air Act specifically allows states to impose air emission standards lower than any set by the EPA. And so I feel that you need to take action and address this when you make a climate action plan. You could set it at zero. Currently, according to the Emissions Inventory from the Allegheny County Department of Health, the Clerton Coke Works, the Urban Plan, and the Edgar Thompson released 5 million tons of greenhouse gases, which is carbon dioxide, methane, and nitrous oxide, in 2022. That needs to be reduced. The cap in trade? Make some action and take it now. Contrary to what you said, Mr. Palmieri, you said that young people should be educated so they should take action? You, sir, on county council. Why don't you take action to address the issue now so they don't have to do as much when they grow up? Second, be a trustee. Please look at the case of Robinson Township versus Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission. It's a 2013 case, Pennsylvania Supreme Court. The quote is, "The drafters and the citizens of the Commonwealth who ratified the Environmental Rights Amendment articulated the people's rights and government's duties to the people in broad and flexible terms that would permit not only reactive but anticipatory, anticipatory protection of the environment for the benefit of current and future generations." That applies to you. That's the state law the young man was talking about earlier. It's not in the future, it's now. Secondly, last one: Money is no good if you can't breathe. Your Air Pollution Control Act in the Declaration of Policies and Purposes says the number-one priority is protect public health, but A4 says develop, attract, and the expansion of industry, commerce, and agriculture. You can't have both all the time. And now, with that Robinson case, it says the priority is for sustainable land use with economic development, not just economic development. So those of you that have routinely voted to support economics need to realize the ballgame has changed. Talk to your solicitors about it. Finally, I'd ask you to consider to provide mechanisms so that you can now change the policy to reflect the Robinson case. Thank you.
The next group of five will be Young Gregoris, Edward Ren, Marcia Bandis, Alejandro Sanchez, and Phoebe Shakaroff-Rice. I'm sorry.
My name is Young, and I have lived in Allegheny County my entire life. I started organizing for climate justice in 2015 and now work for Communitopia. We provide transformative climate change education and support youth to create solutions. We recently did an activity where I asked a group of 11- to 13-year-olds if they agreed with the statement, "Climate change affects my day-to-day life," and the entire class agreed. We then did an activity where we got to answer how certain aspects of climate change are impacting their life, and I'm gonna share some of their answers. To the question, "How does air quality impact you?" Students answered, "I'm not able to breathe correctly," and "I had to stay home and cancel my activities, and it's harder to breathe." To the question, "How does water quality impact you?" Students answered, "We can't drink or swim," and "I've thrown up due to bad tap water." To the question, "How does extreme heat impact you?" Students answered that it caused school to be canceled. They get lightheaded and nosebleeds, or they get bored because they can't play outside. To the question, "How's flooding impacted you?" They answered, "Our basement flooded and ruined all of our stuff, and it messes with our electricity." These answers didn't surprise me, because they were the same problems that I face. But the answers are sobering. Our youth are suffering. We need a strong, ambitious climate action plan to show these students that we are taking this issue seriously. It shouldn't be up to youth to have to fight for their future. They can't vote or run for office. The power lies in the county to lead and act like adults and take care of our youth.
Hello, I'm Ed Renner, retired physician in Pittsburgh with the Climate Justice Coalition, and I'm part of native plant groups. First, as a physician, are you guys okay? Do you need to get upstretched, prevent deep venous thrombosis, anything like that? You okay? Hanging in there? Okay. Anyway, I think I've kind of adjusted my comments to say that if there were ever a bipartisan concern, it would be climate change. It affects everyone's districts and the economy and quality of life of our whole region. I just want to say, council members, you initiated this process. Please do everything in your power to stay on top of the county administration and see this through. So I have some concerns about what's going on. One is, I think there's too much responsibility given to consultants at too high a cost, because we have tremendous assets within our own community, many of which are local experts and are free. And I'm skeptical of too much input by extractive and other polluting industries and too little engagement and support of environmentally beneficial and job-creating businesses that are on the forefront of the new green economy. And our region can have national leadership in this. Fourth, I want to say that there may be a mindset that a climate action plan is an expense both monetarily and due to government staff, but I would like you to see it as a very significant cost savings, such as preventing landslides, flooding, healthcare costs, et cetera. And also, oh, I thought I was gonna finish sooner. Anyway, pollution affects whether people want to live here or bring their businesses or themselves here. And I want to say that we really need to focus on creating a framework for implementation for the long term, well after any consultants are still involved. So in summary, please stay on top of this. Please be involved with it. Really appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
My name is Marcia Bandis from Squirrel Hill. Good evening, Paul. Allegheny County has, may call it a challenge. I see it as an opportunity. Allegheny County, through its Climate Action Plan, has the opportunity to change people's lives in ways they may not have even imagined through ongoing community engagement. With the engagement of municipalities and communities, and I'm talking about outreach here, proactive outreach to these municipalities who would be interested, many of which would be interested, county, we can do so much more. Looking at the areas that are most affected, those that suffer from poor air quality, which we've heard about, water quality, flooding, excessive heat, poor health, financial ability to adapt. I mean, there are people who can't afford air purifiers in their homes, even though it would help them tremendously. But it's from here, through broad outreach, that speaks to the issues of affected municipalities and from their communities, that you draw members for the valuable advisory boards, which others have spoken of. These are not the development experts, they are valuable community experts. An example that I've made up, but just to make a point, a developer might solve a serious flooding problem by redirecting the water across an empty field to a nearby creek. Well, what if, unknown to that developer, that empty field is used by kids almost daily for ad hoc football, baseball, tag, and other games? Community knowledge, transparency could have moved that water 50 feet one way or the other and saved a lot of angst. Through a carefully-developed climate action plan based on the successes of other governments' climate action plans and customized to the unique needs of our county, we can do this. But to not educate ourselves and seek the expertise of those who have already tackled these broader climate change issues is a missed opportunity. Climate change is coming. I know that you recognize it. I know that you're planning to act, but I need you to expand your ideas, to think really big. And seriously, that may start out by being a lot of little actions that include reducing the harm to the vulnerable brought on by climate change, such as excessive heat or electrical outages. It may involve something as basic as helping a willing community to establish climate-safe, climate-resilient centers for people. Seniors, mothers with children, people with health issues, people with disabilities are unhoused, and a transportation plan to get people to the center, and maybe some activities or meals, depending on the length of time, replicatable with some tweaks to other communities. Public advisory committees can provide so much more than simple examples I just mentioned. They can provide insight, direction, and communication. My request is for you to do the research on how others, like Erie County, have started this process. Allegheny County can do this. Thank you.
I wonder if we should move this TV out of the way.
There you go.
Can I have a seatbelt? Is your neck?
Hi, David.
I can't move out your neck the full time.
All right.
Better? Ah, thank you. Hi, my name, good evening. My name's Phoebe Shakaroff-Rice. I am an O'Hara Township resident, and on the leadership team of the Climate Reality Chapter of Pittsburgh in southwestern Pennsylvania, we have close to 700 members across the region largely concentrated in Allegheny County, and we are so pleased about the Climate Action Plan, and we urge you for two things. One, please have, please create the Climate Action Plan with the full participation of those who are most harmed by climate change and who are suffering from the drivers and the impacts of climate change. They need to be a part of the process in a meaningful way, and the Climate Action Plan must benefit these communities as well. Low-income, people of color, indigenous, disabled, LGBTQ, unhoused, et cetera. And the second thing is, please use the full scope of your power as county council members beyond the mere operations. You may not know this, but you are actually ecosystems managers in your role as county council. Allegheny County is our ecosystem. It's our habitat. It's the air we breathe. It's the water we drink. And it's not just our habitat, it's the habitat for babies being born today who are gonna live in it for the next 10 years, people moving here, the next generation. So you have so much power to make such a huge difference. And our, here's the guiding star that we're asking for in all these decisions that you make with the Climate Action Plan. Please use public health as your anchor point, as your guiding star. This is actually real, you are ecosystem managers. This is really what ecosystem managers have to decide. What am I managing for? Please manage for public health. The oil and gas companies want you to manage for their shareholders. U.S. Steel wants you to manage the ecosystem for their shareholders. But as we've heard from Keam, as we've heard from the statistics, we've seen that mortality study, more than one person a day in Allegheny County is dying from air pollution exclusively. And so when we address the drivers of air pollution, we're also driving the drivers, we're also impacting the drivers of climate change. And, you know, Pennsylvania is one of the top emitting states in the whole country in terms of climate emissions. And Pittsburgh being, you know, the mighty force that we are in Pennsylvania, what we do here in Allegheny County has a radical impact on the amount of emissions that Pennsylvania is emitting, and the radical impact on the amount of emissions that United States is contributing. So what you are doing is so influential, and we thank you so much. Please use your power. And again, the prosperity of our region is gonna be based in our health. We have the innovators. We have, you know, we need a livable place, and that is the true way forward. Thank you. Public health.
Good evening. My name is Alejandro Sanchez. I work with refugees from Africa, the Middle East, Europe, and Latin America. And I'm gonna speak briefly about immigrant and housing crisis, because the expression of housing crisis gives the idea it is something temporal. But this is not a crisis anymore. A crisis that lasts for too long becomes a natural state of things. Tied to the idea of housing crisis is the approach of emergency interventions. As we are in a crisis, the programs are designed to be temporal and provide a one-time relief or emergency funds. In the case of refugees and asylum lease, for different reasons, they are always eager to pay on time for their rent. They have been already evicted by violent means from their own land, so they want to avoid that to be repeated. However, some landlords may take advantage of that and raise the price of the rent, as the families cannot fully understand all the codes and implications of those legally-binding contracts. Affordable housing is linked also to utilities. For refugees and asylum lease, it also means to be able to have their utilities under their names so they can apply for subsidies. Also, sometimes refugees and asylum lease receive late bills, water, sewage, garbage that are not under their names but that of the landlord, so they don't see what they have to pay. A strategy that can break that idea of crisis is rent stabilization that works as a long-term approach, and also ownership for the marginalized communities, because equity is also ownership. And immigrants, even though they may be safer here than in their countries, are still marginalized communities. In the end, we can welcome hard-working immigrants and its richness, or just welcome wealth that increase the price of the land and the rent and only renders into profit for few investors, many of whom don't even live here in the Allegheny County. The county and the city have to decide what type of immigration or migration are willing to prioritize. Thank you.
The next group of five is Ray Roberts, followed by Patrick Campbell, Juan Lingau, Fawn Montgomery, and Harry Hochheiser.
My name is Ray Roberts, and I love having lived in Pittsburgh for the past 22 years, where I have raised my kids, and I've also been here long enough to have developed asthma. Thanks for your time and your kind attention tonight, after so many speakers. I've been actively learning about our climate crisis and the political pitfalls, and also learning and advocating for the most effective climate solutions and actions that we can take for the past decade. My opinion is that Allegheny County finally taking action on our climate crisis is painfully overdue. In my day job, I teach math, so I need to ask each of you to dust off your own memory of your math classes when I tell you the dangers of our overheating common home are growing, but not at a gradual or even a linear pace. Those dangers and damages are accelerating along an exponential curve. That means with a rapidly growing rate, so that each year, we are witnessing dramatic new dangers that make previous years seem tame, followed by even more shocking and more extreme changes with every subsequent year. The math of our climate crisis is unforgiving, and it's as true as 2 plus 2 equals 4. But, you know, that's not really a good comparison. What better models our crisis is the math that 2 squared is less than 2 cubed, which is less than 2 raised to the fourth or the fifth power, and so on. Our future cannot look like the past you grew up in. Our future cannot look like the past you grew up in. Where we are now is the sooner we take action, the more we'll be able to save. And that's essential for you to wrap your head around. The sooner we take action, the more we will be able to save. These actions require every single one of us to do our part, and for our elected—as our elected leaders, you have a greater responsibility to your own family, your own friends, your neighbors, and your constituents to become bold and brave. This plan and this process needs to move forward as fast as possible. And as one of you asked, what's the scope and scale that's needed? The sooner we take big actions, the more we will be able to save. I wholeheartedly encourage you to pass this long overdue and well-crafted, community-drafted Climate Action Plan with all due haste and fully funding the task force. And I believe that you need to steel yourself and prepare yourselves to take much greater actions which are just around the next corner. The sooner you take big actions, the more you will save. Please consider as next steps aggressive regulatory protections that do more than a tiny slap on the wrist. Solutions require money but will also save lives, so seriously taxing polluters and joining other jurisdictions in climate lawsuits against the fossil fuel companies we know are guilty of fraud and conspiracy to commit fraud. I believe they need to pay to help us fix this hot mess their lives have caused. The science facts are that this accelerating crisis is big, bad, real, and most importantly, we have solutions available to us to save as much as we can. Arguing against the science and the math is like trying to convince gravity you won't fall if you trip, and 2 squared isn't 4. By the time my students can possibly take your places, it'll be too late. The sooner you take big actions, the more you will save. Thank you.
So, my name is Fawn Walker Montgomery. I asked them if I could go next because I have to run out to speak at another meeting, but I am the CEO and co-founder for Take Action Advocacy Group. I'm a longtime resident of McKeesburg in the Mon Valley. So my comments will be directed at you all as well as Sarah's office, regardless of what committee you sit on you still are elected officials, and it is your duty to oversee this climate action plan. So I agree with everything that everyone has already mentioned in regards to creating the task force, in regards that the task force people on there should look like myself, in regards that there should be money put in the budget for this task force. There should also be money in the budget for supporting Black and Brown-led nonprofits who do the work in these communities that are most impacted, specifically—thank you all—specifically the Black people in the Mon Valley. My colleagues and comrades have said numerous things about the inclusion that should be within the task force, so I won't reiterate that, just to say that it should—people on there should look like myself, and they should be Black, and they should be from the Mon Valley. The second piece, when we're talking about creating this task force, that I really need to say and I need you all to hear me, is there needs to be space made for those communities that are most marginalized. When it comes to climate change, environmental justice, a lot of that are white spaces, to be honest. I see a lot of faces that look like you all and not a lot that look like me. So it's going to be up to you all to make space for us. And if you don't, we just going to take it anyway. But y'all really need to make space for us in this environmental justice and climate change world. I just do not see a lot of Black people there at all. I see us in the beginning, but then that trickles down if you're talking about engagement and education, which a lot of you have pointed out. I think you should definitely do those meetings along with the task force, but look at the time. Look at the time right now. I'm coming from McKeesburg. I was already late. I have a car. There was traffic. So if I didn't have a car, I'm taking one, sometimes three buses to get down here, so keep that in mind. You should also look at the environmental justice communities defined by the EPA, and there's also PA Department of Environmental Protection tool. We shouldn't see that money showing up in the communities that are already over-resourced, like your Mount Lebanon or other communities. No shade against Mount Lebanon, but however, I don't want to read a report that says, oh, we helped environmental justice communities like, you know, Mount Lebanon. What the hell is that? So make sure that you're using the correct tools that are out there. Also, make sure that people know what's coming from the input they're giving you. It is not fun for us to come up here all the time and give our testimonies and tell our stories. We don't do it to put on a show or to pull on your heartstrings. We do it because it's our God-given right to breathe and to be able to drink the water. So please, please make sure you're respecting that when these people come to these meetings, and make sure that you're using the data effectively that you're getting when we're coming to tell our stories. And then the last piece, I'll just say that you are elected, correct? You're elected. We elect you all, so you all remember that. They don't do what they say they're going to do. We can elect, but we can also not elect as well.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Campbell, the Executive Director of the Group Against Smog and Pollution. We've been located here in Pittsburgh since 1969. And Allegheny County urgently needs to adopt a climate action plan to safeguard public health, economic stability, and environmental resilience. As the impacts of climate change intensify, our region is increasingly vulnerable to extreme weather events like flooding, landslides, heat waves, and poor air quality, issues that already strain our infrastructure and affect the health and well-being of our residents, particularly vulnerable populations like children, the elderly, and those with pre-existing health conditions. A comprehensive climate action plan would provide a roadmap to mitigate these risks while positioning the county for long-term sustainability. Adopting such a plan is not only about reducing emissions but also about fostering economic growth and resilience. Investments in clean energy, energy efficiency, and green infrastructure create jobs, they attract businesses, and reduce long-term operational costs. By engaging with the community and supporting local innovation in renewable energy and sustainable practices, Allegheny County can become a leader in the green economy, benefiting both urban and rural communities. Additionally, a plan would ensure that public funds are used more efficiently by prioritizing sustainability in public works and transportation projects, reducing energy consumption, and promoting climate-spart building codes. Public health will also benefit significantly from the adoption of this plan. Climate change exacerbates air pollution, particularly in Allegheny County, which already struggles with some of the worst air quality in the nation. An effective climate action plan would target reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and its co-pollutants, improving air quality and reducing the incidence of respiratory and cardiovascular diseases. Finally, a climate action plan is an environmental necessity and a critical strategy for enhancing public health, economic growth, and social equity. Allegheny County must take proactive steps now to build a future that is sustainable, healthy, and prosperous for all residents. Thank you.
My name is Juan Lingao, and I'm your neighbor from Homewood. I want to focus my comment in two different questions that personally I haven't heard a clear and satisfying answer yet, and I think that the public has not either. The first one is, why is the county climate action plan limited to government operations? Does it need to be that way? I don't think that—I don't get it, and I think that the public doesn't understand. And is really the county that powerless not to be able to do more? This is surprising to me. It's a rich country, a rich county, and a big county, and there has to be something. We have heard already a lot of ideas of what to do, so there has to be more. Leads me to the second question that I haven't heard a clear and satisfying answer to. What real power will the community-based work groups have in the development of the Climate Action Plan? Because I think it's great to listen—I mean, we have—and I wanted to comment on this. So if we don't really know what can be done to do more than just government operations, what we have been doing right now, just listening to all the community, that's precisely what we need to do because they know what works, what needs to be done, and what can be done. They have plenty of experience, plenty of volunteer and passion for this. But also, they need kind of the power to actually influence how the things are going to go. And that's something that the public needs to understand. Why is it not being taken that way, or how will it work? And finally, I want to say something on—for my friends of Sunrise Movement who represent the youth, because it's not enough to bet that the youth will eventually solve this issue. We have to do something now because they will inherit the results of the actions or inactions that we take right now. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
If Mr. Hochheiser is not with us, the next group of five is Melanie Mead, Jay Walker, Dolores Parker, and we have assigned up for Miguel Segue and Miguel Segue III.
Hello. Thank you for having this opportunity for me to speak yet again. I am Melanie Mead, resident of Clerton, Pennsylvania. Fortunately, I was not educated in Clerton. I was educated in northern Virginia, where the former Vice President Al Gore spoke to our senior class. I was told this in 1992, so I consider you very far behind in your actions. San Francisco had a climate action plan written in 2004. So if we stop looking at our neighbors next door and reach up to Vermont and out to the West, you'll hear greater plans that have been put to action, and our community can see and visualize possibilities that they have not ever been able to see. During the Clerton fires, Christmas fires of 2018 and 2019, I asked that the county created support groups. I asked that the county would bring in both climate change with environmental justice because the people in our community are too poor to attend multiple meetings discussing the same things. I would first ask that whenever you give comments, give more comment time to people like me. People like those who you had speaking and you gave guests to, they get paid a lot of money. They can send you a letter of what they said. The people who you needed to hear from in my community are unable to make it. There is a mother who has pneumonia that has to work at Jefferson Hospital right now because she doesn't have health care and because the health care staff is not full. Whenever those fires took place, we could have talked about climate action. We don't have an evacuation plan, so where do you get a climate action plan if you haven't even told us if another fire blows up in USX what to do? So I'd ask you all to use me as a consultant. I'm not as educated. I don't have the titles that people have, but I have a lifelong experience. I've buried every one of my parents and siblings from 2011 to 2020. I asked people like the Breathe Project to bring drones out to our school. Palmyra, thank you, Dr. Mister, for talking about education. Clerton School District has denied climate. They do not talk about air pollution where our little children, not in the city, in the school. 800 students, three out of 12 of those students are diagnosed and suffer from asthma. For every one white person in Clerton or Caucasian who passes away, 2.58 Black people passed away, and it's not our fault. My father was a professor at the University of Pittsburgh who chose to stay in his community to be a speaker and a leader so that people would not be overlooked. Please stop overlooking us. Please give me power. I don't misuse money. I don't steal, and I don't lie. And I guarantee you, I have much brighter ideas than what those guys that you have been paid $100,000 for, and I don't even have to be paid for it. I want you to do it because I think our children deserve better. And as soon as I can, I'm leaving this country because there's no way we should be having this conversation when one state has done it in 2004 and we're just commending ourselves for getting started. I learned about it in 1992. Thank you so much.
I am a board member of the Council of Three Rivers American Indian Center, a member of the Taino Indigenous People of the Caribbean Islands. Many Indigenous people have lived in this area since many thousands of years ago. The original people, the Seneca, the Onondawaga, are still in the region. Their official existence here was terminated with the Kinzuah Dam in Warren County on the Allegheny River, and now the only reservations left are in western Pennsylvania. And yet, their presence is still felt here. Environmental activists like the Gaguenoas from the Allegheny Indian Reservation regularly comes down on the Allegheny River from his reservation all the way to Pittsburgh to bring to attention of all the horrible threat of environmental degradation. We call this river Ojio because there's only two rivers here, not three rivers. The Ojio is the river that some people call Allegheny and then joins into the Ohio all the way to the Mississippi. And the organization that he represents is called Defend Ojio. I fervently request, as a member not only of Defend Ojio, the Council of Three Rivers American Indian Center, and also the Climate Action Coalition Justice, Climate Action Justice Coalition, for you to reach out to the Indigenous people that have been doing the work, that have been putting the labor into this. Thank you very much.
So Dolores has asked my help for reading this comment. She's having some difficulty tonight, so thank you, Dolores.
Thank you.
So Dolores is writing tonight on behalf of Women for a Healthy Environment to emphasize the urgent need for an inclusive climate action plan in Allegheny County. Our communities, especially our children, have long suffered the impacts of environmental injustice, and this cap is an opportunity to finally address these harms. In environmental justice communities like the Mon Valley, children are three times more likely to suffer from asthma than their peers across the nation. Even more alarming, Allegheny County ranks in the top 1% of U.S. counties for cancer risk due to air pollution. To put that in perspective, that means our children are exposed to some of the most toxic air in the country, increasing their risk of developing cancer just by breathing every day. These are not just numbers. They represent kids with serious health issues simply because of where they live. If we do not include these vulnerable communities in our climate action plan, we are putting everyone at risk. That's why we're calling for the creation of a climate action plan, community task force, ensuring that the voices of those most impacted, our children and their families, are heard and prioritized. We need a plan that protects everyone, starting those who are suffering the most. The time to act is now. Let's build a just, inclusive, and resilient future for our children and communities. Thank you.
I'm Miguel Segue III. I'm Miguel Segue's son, the gentleman who went on just a few minutes ago. I'm a Pittsburgh native. I was born and raised here. My parents came here when they were children. Their parents brought them here, Cuban refugees, coming here to find a beautiful place to set up their lives, just like any Italian or Irish or anyone else who comes here with hopes and dreams of a better life. And it was a beautiful place, but when I turned three, I developed a terrible condition called eczema, and it covers my body, and it is very itchy and painful. I also have asthma, and there's an excellent chance that that is as a result of the environmental problems that we're talking about right now. The races that I'm a part of, I'm African-American, I'm Native American, I'm also a little bit Spanish, a little Celtic from Galicia, a little bit Basque from the Pyrenees Mountains, but we're all here together, and just like inside of me, we're a diverse group consisting of many different people, and we can all suffer from the problems that I'm suffering from. In fact, fair skin, you can see the eczema on it a little bit better, so it's something we all should be concerned about, and I see a lot of enthusiasm in this. And I thank this council, by the way, for hearing us, and I thank everyone who came here for coming here to argue for people who are suffering because of pollution. This is a positive step that is taking place, the creation of this climate action plan, and I am a member of the Climate Action Plan Justice Coalition. I'm also a member of the Council of Three Rivers American Indians Center and Children's Windows to Africa, which is a group that brings Afrocentric education to people in public housing communities throughout Pittsburgh. I'm noticing a lot of the same health problems in those areas, but they're not just going to visit us. They're going to visit people that you care and love about, that you care about and love as well. So these are the vulnerable populations, all of them. Up there, down here, we're the vulnerable populations. What can we do about it? Well, congratulations, you have started to do something about it, first of all. But we need to cooperate. We need to move quickly. We need to have inclusion. We need to have the most vulnerable populations having a say in what is happening, and we need to keep corporate money out of it. So yeah, the transparency, the inclusivity, those are my main concerns as a member of the Justice Coalition, and I ask you to please help. Do not stagger our efforts. Do not stay silent in this room where we all are talking about what we care about, which is each other and ourselves. It's a selfish concern. It's a selfish concern. I want to live. I want to have clear skin. I want to be able to breathe, and I want your grandchildren to have the same. We all influence each other by our actions, and you're influencing our votes right now with your actions, not just our votes on you and your future, but other people that you might be associated with, people that you might be rearing for leadership. They are also concerned, and we're also concerning ourselves with what you do and making our voting decisions based on that. The last thing is, we are very determined to live and survive. I have lived with this my whole life, and I'm a bandleader, and I'm a teacher, an instructor of Afro-Latin percussion and Afro-Latin dance with a focus on history and geography, and one of the tribes that I come from consider this whole continent chain as one thing, as a turtle, you know? Now, I don't scientifically believe that we live on a turtle. We actually live on something much more complex and very possibly much more sentient. So I think that it's important for us all to respect our mother with that perception in mind. We all are brothers and sisters here on Turtle Island, and we always have been. That's all I have to say.
If Mr. Walker is not present, that was our last speaker.
Hi. I want to thank all the speakers, I want to thank all my council members, I want to thank the working people, the people back here. So thank you very much. Thank you. [applause]